Test.
I'd like to please call to order the Saline Area Schools Board of Education meeting for May 24th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Getting a little upset. I'd like to pause for just a second. Dr. Latch and I wanted to pause and take a moment of silence. I'm sure my other board trustees and everyone in this room are heartbroken with the shooting this afternoon in Texas at the elementary school. If we can take a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Dr. Latch wanted to say a few words before we got started.
Right, so our thoughts and prayers go out to the families and the victims in the Texas elementary shooting that occurred today. We are heartbroken and thinking about those families and students. We have already been in touch with local law enforcement, both with Saline PD and Pittsfield Police Department, and they will be extra vigilant in patrolling our, near and in our school buildings tomorrow. In addition, we will have our counselors, social workers, and admin on alert and ready to provide counseling to any students or staff that need additional support. So we do want the community to know that we are, we are prepared for tomorrow and we will be ready to go.
All right, thank you, Steve. If everyone could please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is our first opportunity, please, for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, 30 minutes, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda for allow, to allow for any other comment. The presiding officer is guided by the rules set forth in PO 167.3, which has been reprinted on the public comment form collected this evening. Individuals addressing the board should take into the consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. Carter Harris, we'd like to start with you if you could. If you could, please toggle on the mic so the green light is on. Secretary Jones will time you for three minutes. When you're 30 seconds out, she'll show the yellow card. When you're at three minutes, you'll see the red card. If you could just complete your thought, I think you've done this before. And I was talking with a community member today who had a good question. We are not allowed to respond to public comments, so that's why we thank people for their feedback and move on to the next one, so I said I would clarify that tonight. So whenever you are ready.
All right, so of course, thank you for everyone's time tonight, but I just wanted to come tonight and offer my support and encourage everyone for the bond renewal as submitted by Mr. Raff, Dr. Latch, and everyone else who worked out at the school. Of course, it addresses a ton of things that are important to students, be it kind of improving infrastructure at schools and countless other things, but I really wanted to focus on tonight, the opportunities it was providing within STEM. Of course, it's no secret that STEM is such a growing area, especially in this, especially around here with U of M, Ann Arbor, being a hub for this with Autumn Open and everything. And just giving people better opportunities while they're in high school still and at middle school and in elementary school to gain those skills early, because the benefits of doing that are clear from any of the people in the various organizations represented tonight can attest to, whether it be experience, scholarship opportunities provided, or numerous other things. So, and then of course, it has STEM in the title, but the benefits are far beyond STEM too, especially within robotics, which I've been involved in, the opportunities for leadership, leading our team really entirely student-run, community outreach. Earlier this week, we presented to the Saline Chamber of Commerce, and we just got back, me and a couple of the other robotics team members from MIS, from working with them for a robotics showcase event there. So it's really teaching students not just how to build a robot, how to win, how to do great, but how to be great members of their community and be involved too. And approving this bond, giving greater money for this, is going to help, help everyone kind of build up the level of these programs throughout, allow much more people to be involved, and kind of build up these things within STEM and outside of STEM. And yeah, give our, kind of embrace the future focused that we are claiming. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Carter. Happy almost graduation. Next, we have parent, volunteer, and sponsor, Mitchell Road. Mitchell, did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Whenever you're ready.
Absolutely. It's a hard act to follow there, so I'll just, I'll introduce myself. My name's Mitch Road. I'm a local engineer and entrepreneur. I run a robotics company up the block. I'm also the caretaker and owner of Union School. I'm also a volunteer mentor and sponsor of a lot of these STEAM and STEM activities here in the schools. So my company's logo, as well as my personal funds, go into a lot of those things. I wanted to address the board tonight as I see, for a long time I've been looking at what I see as a problem in Saline Area Schools, which is a lack of sufficient support for academic extracurricular activities, especially in the STEAM area. I see a lot of the coaching that goes on in these events. While there are some teachers involved, a lot of it is volunteer coaches. There's very little teacher involvement in a lot of the very big, big activities. There's very little financial support that goes toward these activities, and there's no dedicated facilities. And that is one of the reasons I am here tonight. These programs, by the way, have survived and thrived nonetheless, and I'm very, very proud to say that they have been affiliated and sponsored the Science Olympiad team. They were first in the region and third in the state at the high school level, and the middle schoolers also scored quite well and had effectively their best year ever at the Saline High School as far as scoring goes. So I was very happy to be affiliated with that and work with those guys. But, you know, they win medal after medal after medal. They compete in these championships. I see the first robotics kids compete and do great work, the destination imagination, et cetera. Hundreds of your brightest students have done super well and benefited from these programs. For the past three years, I've been meeting with a bunch of the different parents and volunteers working with the Saline Area Schools administration, for Scott Gray, now Steve and Dave. I've found that they are willing to listen and make changes with regard to supporting these programs and looking at what's going on. They are also, we've been working with them on, talking about, as you guys know, constructing purpose-built dedicated areas for these STEAM teams, so they're not stuck in borrowing classrooms and working in hallways and frankly, rat-infested closets in the middle school. And, and so, you know, and that, that's literal, not figurative. So I've been very happy to see that Dr. Latch and Raff have presented a bond plan to include this space, which I think is fantastic. I really support their approach. I, I'm, I'm very enthusiastic about the, the plans that they have on that front, and I think it's fantastic and will be a big step forward. I did want to touch on one comment that I made in my email that you received, I think about a week and a half ago. There was this notion early on of a fieldhouse construction, and, and as I expressed in my email, I think that that's a catastrophically bad idea and a financial albatross for the district, and I speak as someone who knows how much it costs to run a school building. I will say that, as I said previously, and I know, I know Steve and Dave heard this, that should a fieldhouse be inserted in this, in this millage or in this bond, I will actively work against it and I will redirect resources to inform the public, so this, this millage does not go in the way that we might hope. I certainly don't want to do that. I want to see the kids succeed. I want to see the bond succeed, and, and I want a better, stronger Saline Area Schools. So if anyone has any questions or wants to talk to me afterwards, I'm around and I'm always available. So thank you very much for your consideration, and I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much for your feedback. Next, we have parent, Michael Lehman. Michael, did I pronounce your last name correctly? Okay, all right.
Lamone.
Lamone.
Emphasis on the second.
There you go. Like lemon. Whenever you're ready.
All right, well, thank you. I'm a Saline parent and longtime volunteer with academic competitive programs like we just heard about, and I rise in strong support of the bond issue as presented on May 10th. I think that the inclusion of the STEAM labs facilities for every school building, the upgrade of the science labs at the high school, and the technical education facilities are fantastic, and that this will allow our students to get the scientific and technical expertise and the creative experiences that will allow them to be leaders in their future careers. So it, but it is a big bond. It's, but there are many renovations in there for the existing facilities that, but as we saw in the survey from, presented on May 10th as well, there's strong voter support for it. And so I, I just rise to say I, I greatly appreciate this bond issue. I hope that it goes through and, and the elements that are in it, and I would strongly encourage you to not do anything that would jeopardize this bond from going forward. Thanks.
All right, thank you for your feedback. We do have no other public comment on agenda items. I have one piece for, that would have been for the second. The parent has a conflict and asked to go first, so I remember that we did that one other time, so I just do a little, little vote and see if we have majority that would allow one public comment pulled up from second to the first. Is there any opposition to that?
Do you want a formal motion? I, I-
I don't know if we need a formal motion if we did that. I don't believe we did that last time. I'm fine with allowing it because we have the extra time upfront. I will say that Mrs. Sherman and Mrs. Samp have asked to be rescheduled to the June meeting. They will be presenting with the District Parents Council on the same topic. They would like to be with their families tonight after what happened this afternoon, so I respect, respect their choice. Are there any objections to pulling one from second to first? Okay, thank you. Amy Sontag, parent. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much for letting me go on not an agenda item, so. Hello, my name is Amy Sontag. I wanted to voice a few concerns that I have regarding a survey that our seventh grade children will be given on June 1st. I emailed two weeks ago asking if we would be participating in the Michigan Profile for Healthy Youth Survey. I had several other questions as well. The response to my email was, "You will have to give me more time to answer these questions." This reply was completely fine. However, if you are going to give, going to give such a survey to our children, then you should already know these answers. When I did receive a response of back to my questions, they were not even in complete sentences. A link was provided to the fact sheet for the survey. Before I even emailed, I had already done my research as a parent and reviewed the fact sheets. My questions were not answered based off of the fact sheet, and therefore I emailed asking my questions. Why has Saline decided to participate in this survey? Is it just for funding purposes? Then which program will be implemented to better support our children? How will we give support to the children that desperately need it if this survey is anonymous? I felt that these were pretty straightforward questions and would be answered in a detailed and concise way. I didn't expect to receive a generic link to the fact sheet. I'm not sure if, have you guys read the questions that the children will need to answer? If not, here are just a few. In the past 30 days, how many times did you use marijuana? Like, that question just almost seems like the children are using marijuana. Have you ever tried cocaine? Have you ever attempted to kill yourself? Have you ever had sexual intercourse? And if so, how old was your partner? Are you comfortable hearing these questions right now? Think of how a 12-year-old would feel. I am definitely not comfortable with any of these questions, and I cannot imagine my sweet seventh grader having to read these questions silently in her science class where she feels loved and safe. This survey is completely inappropriate, and we as parents need clear and honest reasons as to why this is even necessary. I understand that we are able to opt out of this survey. I am most concerned, though, about the parents that have not read the email or will not read the email, and then their child will be subjected to it. I believe our children need more from us, all of our children, the children that need support, the children that need to be challenged academically, and the children that need a safe place to be. We cannot provide anything to them when there isn't clear and honest information given to the parents. The parent will always be their child's first and their last teacher. We need to come together, side by side, to give our children the best and brightest future ahead. Please, let's just get back to the basics. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your feedback, Amy. Moving on, as I said, the extended public comment will become part of our District Parents Council report on the June agenda. Response to public comment, response to previous public comment, because we've had a lot, I decided to write something and give, give some information. The board has been receiving feedback from the community on the bond proposal, so I wanted to thank you for that and for sharing personal experiences with us. I also wanted to provide some additional information for clarity. The Board of Education saw the proposal for the first time on May 10th. To my knowledge, trustees were not involved with the community focus groups that happened earlier this year, so when it came to the table, this was our first opportunity to ask questions. We were also not involved with the coordination of the community survey. It is typical to have a big agenda item across a couple of agendas to allow for public comment twice, either here in the boardroom or via email. After May 10th, after the May 10th meeting, we were also at, able to ask questions individually of Dr. Latch and/or Principal Raff, and as a group tonight, we will hear another presentation by Principal Raff and have the ability to ask more questions in this open meeting and possibly vote if the recommended, if the recommended motion moves forward. On the topic of the bond, I learned from several STEAM friends that some of our community members were under the impression that there was a new proposal for a $43 million fieldhouse or STEAM support, an either-or scenario that was being crafted by the board. The current proposal before the board was created by the administration in conjunction with the partners who attended our last meeting. It does not include a fieldhouse, so this information was inaccurate. There is not an alternative proposal that has been sent to us for review. Board packets and agendas are always posted on the Saline Area Schools website, and this is a great resource. It is an opportunity to review the data and the specifics about the pieces of business that are coming before our board. In this instance, on page 27 of the packet, there was a breakdown of some of the items proposed as part of the highlighted bond tonight. Of course, it is a trustee's right and responsibility to ask questions and deliberations at the table, so I expect questions will come up on a myriad of facets on this topic tonight, but I wanted to provide a little bit of clarity here because this has come up frequently in the last week or so. Thank you for sharing your feedback and your experiences with us and for partnering with us to provide resources for our children in Saline Area Schools.
Point of order. Which I probably should have did earlier. The response to public comment is not on the, oh, just kidding, it is. Yep. Okay.
Yep, number four.
And so, just real quick, clarity on response to public comment. Was there a public comment specifically on that topic last week?
So, response to previous public comment, public comment is considered at the board table and the emails that we receive. And just because of the amount, I thought providing some clarity on where we are in the process was a, was a nice idea. I also received feedback from parents that the agenda and packet was very helpful to be able to review. And I'm not sure if everybody knows that we post the packet, so good information to share. Okay, moving forward, I'd like to please move towards a recommended motion to approve the agenda. Items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda, and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion, Gerby.
Brad, thank you.
Second, Jones.
All right, Candace, thank you. And we have everyone here. All those in favor, please say aye.
I, I would like to, I would like to make a motion to revise the agenda. Sorry, I'm looking at my eyes here.
So we have a current motion on the floor with a first and second, so I think we probably need to take a vote on that, and then-
Well, I didn't have an opportunity to say anything, so.
Okay, Brad and Candace, do you, you made the motion and the second, do you want to pull it back?
Can we do it as part of discussion, like, along with the motion?
Sure.
That's what I would pick.
Okay.
And then I'll consider it after that, like, after we've had some discussion, I would like to think about that question.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Moved Gerby, seconded Candace, and Secretary Jones, and would you like to make a comment?
Yes, so under, I'm having trouble reading today. Under action item E, recommended motion is moved to approve the millage renewal proposal. And so I would like to be more descriptive as to where we are in that process. From my understanding, we're not approving the millage renewal proposal to go on the ballot, and we are still in the preliminary phases of, we haven't applied for the preliminary qualification, and so I believe that it needs to be revised to say that we're approving the millage renewal proposal to move forward with the process.
So I'm sorry, what is your exact language for item E?
Do you want to discuss that first, or do you understand what, what I'm saying? This, this seems incomplete to me as to what we are approving, because if we're approving a millage renewal proposal, we don't have the language that's going on the ballot, and are we there in that process?
Yeah, Steve, Steve can speak to this. If I can just clarify for anybody watching, if they might not have the agenda in front of them, so the item in question is item E, recommended motion moved to approve the millage renewal proposal with a .5 mil reduction that will generate 180 mil to be used on future bond projects as submitted by David Raff, Principal of Operations, just to clarify if anybody's watching. But yeah, Steve, go ahead.
In its simplest form, you'd be approving the preliminary budget that was provided so that it can be put on the ballot in November, and then we will be working out all the details after that. That's, that's, that's the question for tonight.
So- So could we change the language to proposed budget? Proposal? You know, just to clarify.
I, I'm fine with it as-is, because a proposal is, is something that is evolving, and it does say 180, so it wouldn't exceed, and it does mention the reduction, the specific reduction in a commitment to the community. I'm, I'm fine as-is.
I guess I actually think I would like, your guys' thoughts on that, Mr. Raff and the leadership from King Scott, like, what's normal?
So, in our presentation, we will go over next steps, put, to what you're speaking to. What you're really approving tonight is the bond scope that we will then use to prepare the treasury application, because I would keep it that simple, because you will be asked to approve the actual proposal after treasury process is complete. So, so hopefully that helps.
Remind me your name, I'm sorry.
Rob.
Rob, hi, Rob, welcome back. So, move to approve the millage renewal scope, so changing the word proposal to scope.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the other, the other part of it is, we will be preparing the application for a .5 mil decrease that will result in $180 million, and that comes from your financial consultant. So those are really the two things that you're, you're approving tonight, and then we go through a whole process to prepare the application, and we'll go over that in the presentation.
So, so should it say, should it say renewal scope and a .5
Yeah.
mil reduction instead of with? So those are two different things, so it should say and instead of with?
Yes.
Okay.
That would work.
Okay. Okay, any objection to changing the language to move to approve the millage renewal scope and a .5 mil reduction, et cetera?
I'm still comfortable in putting forward the agenda, but-
Yeah, same. Same.
Same. Thank you, I appreciate your, your very clear language, that, that helps.
Okay, and Betty, Betty's got all that. All right. Okay, so back to our motion. Motion made, Gerby, second, Jones, all those in favor, please. Yeah, it, it's now a recommended motion to approve the agenda as revised.
Yep, and I make it, Gerby.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries 7-0. Moving on to Julianne, our Board of Education Student Representative last night. Welcome to your final time at the table, I guess. Would you like to introduce your guests?
All right, yes, so we have Allison Duran joining us. She will be the new and upcoming student representative.
Do we want to do Girls Who Code first?
Oh, we're doing Girls, girl. What are we on the agenda?
Oh. Okay, no spoiler alert. Ignore what you just heard.
I'm one ahead, I apologize, I apologize. Only back up.
He's ready to roll.
I was looking, I was looking one jump ahead.
That's okay. No, it, let's do Girls Who Code, and then we want to recognize you before we move on. Okay, perfect.
I apologize. All right, today we have Girls Who Code. Presenting, we have Michelle Cook and Laura Engelhuber. If you guys would like to go up there and love to see your presentation.
Hi, I'm Laura Engelhuber. I am one of the coaches of Girls Who Code, along with Karen Block, who could not be here tonight. We did want to thank you for your continued support of Girls Who Code, and also we wanted to thank the foundation for their donation that allowed us to buy books for each and every member of Girls Who Code. And then I wanted to introduce Michelle, one of our amazing coders, who's going to do our presentation for tonight.
Oh, hi, I'm Michelle. I'm in eighth grade, and I did Girls Who Code for one year. So what is the Girls Who Code Club? The Girls Who Code Club is a club that encourages girls to get into computer science, which is currently a male-dominated field. During Girls Who Code, you learn various skills, including certain, how to use certain programming languages, and how to work on coding projects with others. What we strive to be as Girls Who Code members. As Girls Who Code members, we, we aim to all have the ability to be brave, resilient, curious, emotionally intelligent, and socially just. Meet the team. Our group leaders were Mrs. Block and Mrs. Engelhuber, as Mrs. Engelhuber said, and they were amazing. Thanks to you two for leading the group. And we also had some high school helpers, Nia Block and Sadie Walton, and thanks to them as well for coming out to help us. Why I joined Girls Who Code? I joined Girls Who Code because I wanted to learn more about coding. I already knew some things. I already knew some things, like how to use Scratch, HTML, and I knew a little bit of JavaScript, but I wanted to learn more. What I personally gained after being a Girls Who Code. I gained a lot in the ten weeks I had Girls Who Code. I gained not only coding knowledge, including how to use Python better, and how to use Scratch better, but I also, I also learned how to work with others on code better, and I made new friends. So, this is what Girls Who Code has accomplished this year. At the beginning of Girls Who Code, we split into groups to work on various projects. These projects, or these groups are based on what project you want to make a topic about. We ended up with five projects, endangered species, LGBTQ awareness, what type of dog are you, drawing prompt, and astronomy and math. I was in the endangered species group. Um, the groups mostly use Scratch for their projects, but some groups also use Google Sites and HTML. My group used Scratch and HTML. In summer, Girls Who Code is a great club, and it provides valuable knowledge and memories, and I'll never forget my amazing experience with it. Thanks for listening.
Thank you both so much, um, any questions or comments from trustees?
At least one.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure. Well, two things, first of all, I'm a big fan, big supporter, and every time I receive a book on coding, I make sure that Karen Block gets it, or you get it, somebody gets it, and I hope you're developing a nice big library, and as long as I'm sitting here, I will definitely be continuing to do that, and in fact, I've got a little Girls Who Code pin.
I know, I'm a little jealous of that, you got all the swag.
Yeah, I've got, well, some of the swag, apparently there's more. And, uh, beyond Girls Who Code, of course, there's also Digital Divas, and there's some great organizations in Detroit. Uh, and so when you leave the school, uh, you, you will, you'll be welcomed in, and with your coding skills, there's a great large community out there, and I'm so glad to see that you're a part of it, and, and thanks very much. And the other thing I wanted to add was that, I, maybe this is a flex, I don't know, I met Mitch Resnick a couple of years ago, and if you don't know who he is, he is the inventor of Scratch, we gave him a little award, and it was, it was very cool. He was so delighted to see what has happened with his, his little program, and how many young people it inspired to, to get into coding, so thanks very much for carrying on with that.
Yes.
So, I have a question about, um, your recruitment or outreach, um, to, uh, your peers who may not be in the program. Um, so I don't know if you connect with maybe younger girls, or, um, how, how your out outreach is currently, or, um, maybe ideas that you have for in the future.
We haven't been outreach into girls that are younger yet, but what we have done is the girls that have graduated from the middle school and gone to the high school, we have them come back, and they're helping bring up the middle school level, but we haven't gone younger yet, that could be something we've looked into, but we have the girls that, um, continue at the high school level come back, and that's how, um, Nia and Sadie, thank you, lost her name for a minute, Nia and Sadie came back to help us this year, and I think Michelle's planning on coming back next year.
Awesome, yeah, it, um, second Michael, and, um, the programs that are out there for women in engineering, um, for STEM programs, especially at the college level. So, I think that's great that, uh, they're offering these opportunities, and, um, good to have a, a network and a support in those, those fields.
Thank you. So, we are about to have a discussion here in a little while about, um, a bond that has a pretty big allocation proposed for, um, STEM and STEAM clubs. So, a question that, um, my colleague, Treasurer Gerby, always asks, and this is a perfect opportunity. So, what sorts of things would be, um, things that would help to grow your club or to help your club to thrive?
Um, I think, do you have any ideas too? Okay, I'll let you start.
Better access to like coding classes, like we have the Girls Who Code website, which is great, they have a lot of really good basic tutorials, but if we could have access to like more in-depth tutorials from a wider variety of languages, that would be really helpful and good.
And it was mentioned earlier that a lot of the coaches are volunteers, Karen and I both were volunteers this year and Karen last year, so having increased funds, that would also be helpful.
Thank you.
Sorry, I spilled your thunder.
Excellent, thank you so much, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, appreciate you. Julianne, we would like to celebrate your year with us on the board, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Latch.
Thank you very much, yep, Julianne, we want to celebrate you, and thank you for your tremendous, uh, support of the Board of Education in the school district this year. You, your vibrant personality, you're a great collaborator, you've helped with the student showcase, and generally just being a good ambassador for, um, the students, and, and the connection between the Board of Education and the, um, student body, so thank you very much, we want to present you with, um, some Edge goodies, a scholarship, and a plaque, and then we wish you the best of luck at the University of Kentucky next year.
And the plaque does say Julianne, it doesn't say Buggy, so. Do you want to, do you want to say anything about your experience before you introduce your guest?
Uh, yeah, uh, so, well, to start, I appreciate, uh, how welcoming the, the board and all the school administrators have been throughout my journey as the student rep, uh, to have everybody know me by name, and then also treat me as a fellow board member, or collaborator in something that we're doing, has just made the role far more enjoyable. And it's been a true honor to represent, uh, each and every student here. And from, from kindergarten to junior year, I, I didn't really know what like the board was, to be honest, and like whenever I'd say like, you know, let, let's go on a random field trip here or there, they'd be like, well, I got to talk to my boss, and I never thought teachers really had bosses. And then I ended up here, and I, and I, and I, and I kind of saw, uh, you know, how it, how it all worked. So, I, I didn't really appreciate how much goes into every aspect of, you know, the education that we get at Celine, so seeing that has just reminded me again how lucky I am to be a Celine Hornet. And then to have the opportunity to work with you guys and work, uh, on the inside of the school district, um, and then see the, the involvement of the community as well, uh, is, is an experience that, to say the least, is, is, it's priceless. Uh, I've learned more than I can comprehend, you know, each day, or a conversation I have with somebody, an experience comes up that I've had here that just, that just plays in, and I'm like, oh, well, I, you know, I, I kind of know how that works, I kind of have a bit of insight into that, so uh, that, that's, that's something that I hope will continue, uh, to help me out in the future. So, once again, thank you to all the teachers, staff, administrators, uh, and board members, uh, for working with me as a trustee. And, um, I'm incredibly proud to, to have the opportunity to call myself the student representative, and this is a role that is incredibly valuable, and once more, it's something that I've been very proud and thankful to be able to do. So, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Julianne, and without further ado, would you like to introduce the new Board of Education Representative for the 2022-2023 school year?
Well, you, you already heard the first part of it, but, yes. So, Allison Duran, she's a current junior here at Celine High School, um, just a little bit of insight, she's committed to both academics and the community. Uh, she's a member of the SHS, uh, NHS Drives Committee, where she and her fellow committee members donated thirteen thousand pounds of food and home goods to Celine's social services last December, and also volunteered at the Celine Area Safety Town for the past five summers. Her goal as a student representative, uh, for the board includes addressing the social emotional health of young students and supporting a diverse, rich curriculum for all students, so please welcome the upcoming student representative, Allison Duran.
Come on up, Allison. All right. Allison, are you ready for your debut, say a few words and introduce yourself to the team and the community?
So, like Julianne said, my name is Allison Dorn, and thank you for the introduction. Um, when I got the call from Superintendent Latch while I was feeding my dogs a scoop of dog food, uh, I was a little bit surprised, but I was mostly just honored for the opportunity to represent my community and the student body. I've always been dedicated to supporting my community as well as my fellow students, and I'm incredibly honored to have this opportunity to do so for the entire school district.
Thank you. Oh, stay up there, I, I'm sure people might want to say hello, um, so I was, I was so pleased to be able to participate in the interviews with Dr. Latch and with Julianne, and, um, I wanted to thank every candidate who came forward for an interview, and thank you Principal Stager, didn't say interim, did I? For, uh, for doing the screening and bringing those wonderful students to us. One thing I would like to tell the board before you guys can ask her any questions or say hello and introduce yourselves, um, she was the student representative on the Community Esser Committee, so Treasurer Gerby will probably like that one. She did that because she likes, um, decision-making. She is, uh, part of our Careers in Education curriculum, and spends time with first graders, fifth graders, and seventh graders. So, I loved that she has a passion for education and for little ones, and I thought that would resonate with this team, and she's just seemed very motivated and very self-directed. So, welcome, and, um, I'd like to open it up if anybody would like to introduce themselves or ask her any questions.
Well, as it was prompted, uh, I am, I'm Brad Gerby, Treasurer Gerby, whatever. And yeah, like, we, keep me in line, right, as part of the, you know, with your Esser, you know, committee expecta, or expertise and all of that, but welcome, glad to have you.
Thank you.
Just want to say welcome. Um, appreciate that you have a focus on the mental health and social emotional supports, because that is so important after, you know, these trying times that we've been through the last couple of years, so glad to have you as a partner on the, on the board, and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
I had a question, I wondered, um, which elementary school did you attend?
I went to Pleasant Ridge.
I thought you were a Pleasant Ridge kiddo, well, it's great to have you here and representing all of the kids, um, like President Stebbin said, I think it's, you're uniquely positioned in having, um, having close contact with kids in, in a variety of buildings and a variety of spaces, and, and the teachers and the administrators in those buildings, so um, you'll be able to offer us, um, some insight, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to say very nice to meet you, and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Since Michael pointed, it's like, here you go. Yeah, I'm super excited, um, for, um, you volunteering, um, to do this role. And, um, happy that you, you were part of it this year. And so, uh, welcome, um, looking forward to getting to know you, and, um, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, um, welcome, and, uh, thank you for stepping up to, uh, take on this role, it's, um, always great to see our, our wonderful high school kids getting involved, I'm always impressed to see all the great things that everybody's doing, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you're officially off the spot until August. We'll see you later, have a wonderful summer, and I'm sure we'll be in touch and give you all sorts of dates, times, et cetera. Thank you. All right, um, moving on to our next scheduled report, Millage Renewal Presentation, Principal Raft.
Thank you very much. I'd be remiss if I didn't congratulate Principal Stager for being come, that new high school, Principal Celine High School. Been a sidekick of mine for six years, that deserves it, just that being with me. So, uh, congratulations, Streese, you'd be great. Um, so here we are, we're back again, we're kind of go through kind of what we were asking, um, a recap from last board meeting on the tenth of May. Uh, we are looking for a, for our Board of Education to approve the millage renewal scope, uh, for a hundred and eighty million dollars, which is an actual point five decrease from our eight mil, we'll be looking to going down to a seven point five mil. Um, this is a, a millage that will be for the next ten years, so it's a scope of ten years as well, so when you look at how far ten years is, we're looking at ending our, ending this in twenty twenty-three, thanks, that was the math. Good thing we have a lot of steam involved in this. Just kidding. All right, so, uh, we did talk about, uh, just a quick rec, recap on why the decrease. Uh, one, we want to be, continue to live within our means in being fiscally responsible as a district. Commitment to our Celine community, uh, in two thousand and fifteen, we did talk about, not myself in general, but, uh, former administration and board talked about if we ever came back for a bond that we would reduce down our millage. City of Celine has an upcoming utility increase, which many people are hearing about, um, regarding water, and of course, I live in the city of Celine, so I understand what they're talking about. We also have surrounding entities that Dr. Latch talked about last time that potentially will be coming, looking for more money, uh, as we look at our fire, potential, uh, fire bond, um, in different other pieces around the county, um, as well. And then actively, we continue to actively look for other ways of fund things, we like, we talked about our two hundred and forty-five thousand dollar security grant that, that, uh, Jay Grossman and, uh, Mr. Clary, Rex Clary, and Miranda, uh, Oozley, I'm sorry, Miranda, how are you? Applied for, there's other things that we continue to look for to help support our district in a financially responsible way. So, I'm just going to go into the bond proposal in a little bit more depth than we did last, and on May tenth. I appreciated the time I spent with many of the board members, uh, with very good questions, um, and I know that there's, continue to have questions as well. Our focus really is, is, is an educational entity, this is what we, we do, this is what we are here for, we, we did not, we, in two thousand and fifteen, we refocused on the safe, warm, and dry concept. We want to build in a lot more education into this one, as, as we went through not only our focus groups, but also our survey, and talking to a number of people throughout. So, one of the things we did talk about, um, is looking into STEAM spaces that can be used. If you're familiar with our, our electives, we start in kindergarten with an Innovation Lab class, which is very STEAM-oriented, and this is an opportunity to obviously start K and work through their graduating years, adding classes, um, robotics at Celine High School, we got, we have Intro to Engineering, uh, some people have asked, what does a STEAM space look like? I want to be real clear to everybody that's here and also who's listening, these are just, these are just concepts that have been provided for us, nothing has been designed, nothing will be designed until the Board of Ed gives approval to move forward, and then we'll have a design committee with students, staff, community members, to help look at the different pieces we have, I just want to make sure that when they see a picture, that's not what exactly it, it will look like. These are just concepts that are done so they can project budgets from our construction management side. So, this is just a, oh, just different, different setups, and I'm sure Carter could explain more of these. Yeah, I have a number of students who could explain a lot more about how these things could really be useful within the school day, and then carry over into the, and into the evening and on the weekends. These are just different spaces, there are a number of places that we'd like to visit, especially when we start designing this, to see where, where, what things we could do to be innovative and creative, and that's part of the King Scott responsibility as they look forward with, uh, our committees. I'm just going to kind of go through the buildings that, that you guys have seen, but no one else has seen publicly. Well, they looked on the website, right? Everything's on the website.
Um, I don't think, um, I don't think the images are in the packet.
Oopsie.
I think the, um, I know the page twenty-seven is the, the allocation per building.
Great.
But these are good to include, thank you.
Yeah, so, we'll, start with Pleasant Ridge, this is a building that is right now at a capacity. Uh, one of the things that we know is that we use spaces differently than we did when Pleasant Ridge was created and opened back in, I think, eighty-nine. So, we have a spa, opportunity to add a couple spaces out to the side parking lot, if you're familiar with the area, that will be for, for STEAM Innovative Lab, uh, classes that will be happening in the morning, during the school day, but also at the evening, there's opportunities to enter from the outside and, and storage, and all sorts of good spaces there. Again, not designed, that, that's a, a location that we've, we've talked about. What it looks like on the inside will be part of a, a bigger design committee and team. We look at Pleasant Ri, or Wood and Metals, same similar piece, um, adding, again, two large STEAM labs, storage and, and space that is accessible from the outside entrance, um, and there's some storage in the back as well. Heritage is, uh, our four-five building, uh, it is again at full capacity at this point, and we're looking at adding, and adding five classrooms out the front to, to reduce the strain within the classrooms and lower class sizes as well. as well. We have also steam space that has developed on the, on the corner there. Again, a concept that we can look with and see if it fits. It just seemed to be like the right location at that time. We have added on to this school a couple different times in the back, or at least one time in the back, with the band and music rooms. The current middle school, and this is a piece that we looked at where our transportation station, or transportation building is at this time, looking, we'll talk a little bit about the relocation of transportation to provide us the opportunity to work within our senior centers. Now, our senior center is part of our Seline schools. We have employees that work for us, they're, we embrace the partnership between our senior center, and so this will be an opportunity that potentially will have not only a steam center, but a cosmetology program that we have that's located through our CTE program along with some other things that are tied in. Again, this is the concept that we will, will go with, but the design team will help design it. We are looking at expanding our cafeteria. If you've ever been in the cafeteria with 400 students, it's pretty tight, especially middle schoolers, but we're looking at taking some space that we had there and expanding that as well. And also along with renovating and updating the locker rooms and our bathrooms as well. That doesn't, there's no representation there, but that's part of this scope here. The high school, looking at expanding out the front of the high school by where the, where the sign is. Now, one of the questions did come up is why wouldn't you put it in the back of the building? Well, you could, and that may be where it goes, but at this point, really showcasing our steam and our, and our science, technology, you know, engineering arts and mathematic component in the front of our building when people go by, they really get to see that. It also will be located where our new weight room will be. Again, we talked about the weight room being on the second floor, where structurally is starting to move a little bit in the fact that we needed to get it to the main floor as well. That would reallocate our weight room currently, and it'd be a multi-purpose room. We currently have dance and cheerleading, they always get, seem to be misplaced and moved around. It would be nice to have a spot for them as well. So this is a space that we could use. It's a, again, 2,500 square feet or close. That's kind of the focus on the area of steam and the education components that we will be building within our buildings over the next several years. Another area that we talked about, which was very, was our playground and outdoor learning spaces, but this is a picture of one of our locations. And I can speak as an elementary principal in both buildings and listening and having a wife of 29 years as a kindergarten teacher. Our playgrounds are kind of, and I will say it, kind of rough. This was an area that usually PTAs help support. If you have any history with Heritage and the Woodland Meadows campus, that was a rock quarry back in the 80s and before. I know that because I happen to maybe got myself in that area a few times, but they were not able to fund a playground when they passed the bond back in 97, so all the money for playgrounds were taken out. So that really is like a rock quarry out there if you actually go out and walk around. So it'd be nice to be able to enhance that playground. Now, before anybody gets really excited, that's not what the playgrounds will look like. I watched Rex's, the blood pressure go up, but we are able to, we are, we do have some funding involved that will help really bring these to a higher scope and rec, I know we talked about the amount that playgrounds do cost with, with different materials, but that is, that is an actual playground on the lower here on Metro Park, and I know Mr. Clary's been there and visited. But there'd be concepts like that, we're going to try to enhance all of our playgrounds, K5, to where they have safe spaces and inclusive spaces to be out on. Projects for our facilities, and this is kind of where we leave the education, we go to our facility portion. Our campus we're on here currently, if you, if you really drive around, it's a beautiful Saturday morning drive, it's beautiful to watch the sunrise and set, but in the same sense, we have middle school tennis courts that things are rising and lifting from all different directions, cracks are all over. We know that we are looking on a short-term support for this currently, but our track hasn't been redone in a number of years, so we do know that our middle campus needs some attention over the next several years as well. Again, proof of concepts are coming up. This is not, this is not an actual, what it happens, but we do currently on our middle school complex, Liberty Complex, we surround it with four buildings that are 2,400-plus students in a daily, a daily operation. We are looking at obviously redoing our track. No, Tran, don't get that out there, it's not, this is a proof of concept. I've been putting it everywhere. But I will say, we are looking at putting tennis courts and a new tennis court with, obviously pickleball. We know that's a becoming, up and coming game, they're even having community eds running pickleball for our young kids now. But we have adding a new track, getting a new football stadium, not soccer, football, lacrosse, field hockey. We have, we have a baseball field out there currently, two softball fields, we have a soccer field, we have, we're looking at making a complex that really embraces all of our schools, our community ed programming that we use, and also our community. We have walking paths through the whole thing that would connect everything. But again, this will be a committee of people with an architectural design saying, what, what is the best layout that we can do with this beautiful piece of land that we've had here and see where we can do and really make this a great piece and a revenue income piece from our side of community ed and other areas. So that piece is important for our, for our journey going forward as well, but it's, it's a long process involved. All this has to happen, for this to even happen, our transportation facilities would need to move as well and, and for the best and the interest of moving it towards in our industrial park more likely. We do own a piece of property which did come up, and that will still be a part of the discussion when we come to is what are all our, what are all our options? We have a piece of property in the corner of Michigan Ave and Industrial. Personally, I don't know if that's a great location for a transportation center, trying to get out there. One, it's a very valuable piece of land, but it's also a tough area to get in and out. There, the city does have pieces of land and property that Mr. Clary has talked to over the years that potentially could be very good, a good place to be able to move our transportation, get it off the complex, get it away from our senior center and our students, and then obviously have something a little bit more up to date. I know that we've looked at solar panels on top of the roofings, we've looked at electric, which is an area of, is an area that we should be focusing more and more on. I do know that the electric buses cost two times what a, a regular bus would cost, ups in the 300,000, Mr. Clary, and then a regular bus would cost about 105? 120? So there's that piece, but there are also rebates in things that we can get along the way as well. So that's something we're looking into. Again, nothing set, I just Googled that and found it, and it was pretty nice, actually. So we've kind of moved forward with that. But anyways, and then just the projects for the future, we've got, and this is just the three things I want to throw out there. You've got safety and security, you've got technology and infrastructure, we will continue to always look at what's trending and what's going on and what we need to do to keep our facilities moving forward. And I know the ticket for 180 million is a large ticket, but when you could look at the reduction in the mil and the amount of things we can get over the next 10 years, I think we're, we'll be continuing being in a good spot from an academic and facilities standpoint. At this time, again, the board I know will be talking and asking questions, we're looking for a 0.5 mil renewal reduction for the Seline area schools to move forward with planning the 180 million bond spanning for the next 10 years. And I'm going to turn this over to the president of King Scott, who will talk a little bit about our next steps.
Okay, I'll go over next steps and then we can open it up for questions for, by the board. So as we touched on earlier, what tonight is, is really the board approving this scope and approving a .5 mil decrease that'll generate 180 million to execute this scope. Then that triggers the King Scott Clark team to start the treasury process. And so what that means is, we will prepare the actual bond app, is what we call it, but it's a preliminary qualification of bond application. So we will prepare that, and then we are, we will go through a treasury review process. Once that process is completed, then it will come back to the Board of Ed for approval of the bond app, which will then trigger going to the next step, and that's getting it on the November ballot. So timeline-wise, in June, as we're preparing the bond app, we'll also start preparing for the campaign. So that's where we start planning and we start developing our messaging and our visuals that we will then use in the campaign. July, we will look to finalize the campaign materials because quickly in August is when we would actually start to execute the campaign. And if you remember in the last meeting, we do campaigns differently now, absentee voters is a large part of elections, so we do what we call a soft start, and we focus getting information out to the absentee voters, so they're informed before they vote. And then after that, we then start the formal campaign for informing the electorate of what the bond proposal's about, so when they do go vote in person, they're informed, and that's the main goal of a campaign, is to inform the voters. Also in July is when the Board of Ed will now have the formal bond app, we'll have gone through the treasury process. That meeting is actually set for July 12th, and we, the board will be formally asked to approve that, and then that's when it gets formally submitted to treasury, and then on August 9th, you'll be asked to actually vote to call the election, and that's how you get it on the November ballot. So those are two key dates as board members, that July 12th and August 9th. But there's a lot of work that we'll be doing to prepare everything so that you can then take that action. And then August is really the final planning of the campaign, and then we start to execute it. And again, just like the process we went through to develop this bond scope, the campaign is going to be very similar from a sense of, we will outreach to not only the focus groups, but also we will outreach to community groups to inform them of this bond so that we can start to ideally generate support, but really inform the voters, and that's the most important thing. So that, that is our basic timeline moving forward, and then September and October will be in full campaign mode, and board members will also be armed with information because you, I know you guys get a lot of input from the community, you'll get a lot of questions, and it's our job to make sure you're informed, so then you can help communicate what this bond proposal's about. Okay, well, we'll open it up to questions and be happy to answer anything further.
Thanks. First, thank you for providing information. I know we had a lot of questions last time, and thank you for the additional documentation and the images and things like that. I realize they're draft imagery, right? This is really exciting. I get excited when I can help kids and I see an opportunity to help kids. So I had a quick follow-up question and then want to open it up to the trustees. David mentioned Carter sitting there, and so it made me think, and my, my first question is, with all this excitement, clearly these students and families are sitting here and excited about this, how do you, if this moves forward, how do you use the students as part of, as part of this campaign and as part also, not just to get votes, but how do you use them as subject matter experts since they are the ones that are living in these spaces and the spaces would be created for? So can you talk a little bit about students?
Yeah, we, we really welcome, and students are probably the most effective people that we can access for a campaign because they can really speak to what it benefits to them. So Carter and some other students we met with in the focus groups, which led to a lot of the, the steam improvements that we now have in the bond. And I must say, this bond is unique from a standpoint, with all the districts that King Scott works with, this is the largest commitment that we've seen by a district to take steam at all grade levels. And so I think that is something that we're really going to promote for this bond, and Carter will, and his other fellow students will be key in helping promote the benefits of what steam provides for students. Now, for the actual design process, we, we do a very collaborative effort and they will, we will form what we call design input committees, and those committees will be made up of students, other volunteers that are in, and I'll use steam as an example, other volunteers that are in the steam programs, and that's when we really get to the detail. So everything we've done now, again, is proof of concept. You notice we gave that term to Mr. Raft so he would continue to, because we need to manage expectations as well. You heard me. Yeah, yeah. But I mean, now, when we get into the design input committees, that's when we really do a collaborative process where they have input in really every square foot of the improvement. And then we will share our expertise and our experiences of where we've had success, but then take their ideas, and then together we will create a steam facility that, you know, every student is going to love being in. And so that's just an example, and every space that we design in this bond, we go with that same process. So, you know, we'll be working with the seniors when we're looking at helping to improve that space. So, but we, we look for student involvement everywhere we can.
All right. Thank you very much.
I would also say that, you know, people, there's series that we're dealing with. So if you guys are aware, we're wrapping up Series 3, which is our middle school gymnasium at this point, but there'll be different series, so some of this will happen down the road always based on what the determination on the series is, which we'll be starting to plan as soon as we know to move forward.
I just wanted to highlight a couple of, of things that I've been thinking about and also from my conversation with Mr. Raft. So would it be possible to go back to the picture of the Woodland Meadows playground? It was Woodland, yeah. Right there, yep. So this is, this is a playground that I'm very familiar with because I spent a lot of, a lot of days out there with students, so I wanted to just point out a couple of things. Mr. Raft stated that the two schools, while beautiful when they were, when they were built, there were some decisions that had to be, had to be made because I think it went to the voters twice. Is that, is that how that happened? So the first time it went, it was not approved, so then it went back. And when it went back, the buildings, as, as we know them today, were approved, but the surrounding area was not. So we know that we've had to go back and we've had to do some different things, like for example, to the parking lots and to the, to the drop-off and pickup loops. But this particular picture reminded me of a few things. So the first is, when I was teaching there, we had talked to our partners in the PTO because it's actually, it's actually kind of dangerous out there for some of our kids. So because that is built on what used to be a rock quarry, there's no topsoil, or very limited topsoil, and the topsoil that was there has been washed away. So I think Mr. Clary could probably say how difficult it is to maintain that space, but also when it rains and every time it rains, it becomes harder. It's almost like cement out there, and the kids are playing on that, and multiple times, multiple times, we had kids who, who would get hurt, you know, running and falling on something that's like cement, you know, is, is difficult. And we talked about bringing in topsoil, but the expense to bring in the topsoil for that area was more than a PTO budget could afford, and also because of the way that it's designed, it would have just washed away. So it is extremely important for the safety of our kids that our playgrounds are attended to, but also for inclusiveness. So the, the playgrounds and the way that they're designed right now was done with a shoestring budget. So, so coming back to our, our commitment to inclusivity, this picture in particular really spoke volumes to me about the need for this particular aspect. So it isn't something frivolous, we know we need to get our kids outside more, there's, there's a problem with kids being sedentary, so if we can provide spaces that are motivating and engaging for kids to get outside, this piece is, is a big piece for me. That's not to say that the steam piece is not. The steam piece, I think we are hearing a lot from community groups and, and in my own house about, about the different spaces that, that could be added, but I didn't want this to be overshadowed as being minuscule because this is something that our kids are on every single day. because this is something that our kids, um, are on every single day. So, um, I wanted to highlight that piece in particular and I might have more later, but this piece was something that was important to me.
Thanks. It's Mr. Ellis's drone. Took a nice shot of that.
Comments or questions? Michael?
Sure. Um, thank you very much. First of all, thank you to Mr. Clary and Mr. Raff for answering my, uh, questions. I, I was really stuck on the, uh, uh, proof of concept for what was Crabtree Field and all that area. And I appreciate that. So I, I want to go back to the, the very last slide. July 12th, I think it is, where the app, the bond app goes to Treasury. Could you please explain that just a little bit for us, having never put a bond app toward Treasury? I'm not really sure what that process, I assume there will be a packet of financial details. And is there, and the other thing is, well, let me ask all the little questions. Is there anything you anticipate, uh, that could slow the process down or have it bounce back to us or any issues that you anticipate that we might be able to assist with? And I, and how long does the process usually take before approval is granted? I assume, I hope before August 9th.
Yes. Yeah, it's a very structured process. So, uh, let me speak first to the bond application. Um, so one section of it is the financials. And your financial consultant, PFM, does roughly nine to 10 sheets of data on the actual bond app. So they, um, that, those financials represent your current debt and, um, how that debt falls off and then how the, the new bond up to what would be a .5 mil decrease. Uh, cause this proposal, you're not proposing to recapture everything that's falling off. You're recapturing everything minus .5. Um, and I'll let Miranda, she can speak to that a lot better than I can. So you'll have a group of financial information there, all their projections. It's, um, um, for those that are really big into finance, I'm sure those are very exciting sheets to look at. You know, I just look at the bottom line, how much money are we going to generate? Um, the other thing those financials will also outlay is the series. This is a multi-series bond that your financial consultant is recommending. So you'll see the timeline of when those bond proceeds will become available to the district. Um, so following that, we have to, um, as the architect, we prepare with Clark Construction detailed estimate sheets that are in the Treasury format for all the bond scope improvements. And it outlines everything, the construction costs, it outlines the professional services, the construction services. Um, the other, uh, part of the finances, the election costs are figured, figured in this as well. Every dollar needed to execute the bond is counted for, every dollar in of that 180 million. So we'll have these project information sheets with detailed estimate sheets for each of the series. You'll see how each series is broke out. We also have to, uh, provide enrollment projections. Um, whenever we do additions on buildings, we have to do an enrollment analysis. So we'll, um, get enrollment projection information. Uh, and then we do a calculation on building utilization. So you'll see that as well. Um, and again, these are things that Treasury reviews and checks. Did you have a question?
I, no, I just didn't want us to get into too much detail. I'm sure there are a lot of questions coming up, but I, I got the good sense now of what's coming up and what we're going to be having put in front of our eyes. So I, I appreciate.
Yeah. And, and then you also asked, do I see any issues? Um, no, because it's a very structured process. Um, we're very familiar. Your attorneys, uh, will also be involved along with us because they draft the ballot language and they make sure that's in accordance with state statute and all that. Um, so it's a pretty formal packet and that's what goes to Treasury. And that's what ultimately becomes the ballot proposal.
All right. I have a couple of specific items and then I don't know if this is the right time for me to share my general thoughts, but you guys can decide if you want me to like go away and come back. But, um, pool repairs are listed as one of the items under the scope for the high school. Can you give some specifics onto, on those pool repairs?
So we met and there are some, um, definite repairs needed. Rex, I don't know if you want to speak to that as far as exactly what? We met with them and our team came up with a number of items.
I swear I've heard something about like because of the floor on our pool, something about hosting events or anything like that, that you're saying that that's not true.
I've not heard that, but.
Okay. Then I, then that's a done deal. All right. Um, I appreciate you covering my second question, which was the cost of a bus. So that was good, electric 300 and regular 120. And then talk to me about, um, air conditioning improvements and things for the gymnasium and in the athletic wing. Do we not currently have?
We do not have air conditioning in our high school gymnasium. And if you've ever been in that facility in the summer, it, it, anytime from about now on, it, it's, it baffles me that that wasn't put in the concept back in 2002, but it, it isn't. And it's, it's time to have that added. And Mr. Clary thought about that as we were putting the HVA pieces together.
Yeah, I, I can speak to that. Um, it's unbearable. It, it's, it's, it's to the point of being concerning for the, the students that are in, in the wrestling room, the strength and conditioning room, gymnastics and the basketball area.
Yeah. And the only room that really likes that, that way is the wrestling room during season. But it's that way after that, so.
My students haven't gotten to the high school quite yet, so, uh, but we're, we're going right now. So I'll, I'll, I'll defer for a little bit if anybody wants to ask any questions, but I, I'd like to make some comments at the right, at some time.
I'll follow up his, his bus question that got answered. Um, and don't need this information tonight, but in general, moving forward for our group, I think especially for the finance committee to understand, is if we do move towards electric buses or things like that, like, does that designate a cost savings down the road? Like what is the, the long-term forecast look like on transportation costs overall? Would be a great thing to know in finance and then for the whole board. Oh, do you want to come up? Just in case anybody happens to be watching.
So, um, we will be applying for the grants. Um, those opened up on Monday or Tuesday of this week. Uh, today's Tuesday. So it was last Thursday. It was last Thursday when they opened up. So we will be applying. We are not a prioritized district on that list, but non-prioritized districts are eligible for $250,000 per bus and $13,000 of infrastructure from the meter forward. So there is funds available. I don't know. It, it is a lottery system. Um, and we'll have to see where we rank in that. But we will apply for two or three electric buses in this first round. And we talked about with Region 12 this morning with, uh, Tracy Mulcare, our rep for Region 12, um, collaborating with other districts. Um, Tracy was successful in getting a hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, collaborating with, I think it's 10 other districts, uh, with Brown, um, Yale or Brown City leading that charge. But, um, so we hope to do that again. Um, hopefully we come out on top. Anything more than three requires significant infrastructure before the meter, uh, for charging stations. So that's what, if we do have a new facility, I think we'll have the framework in place and we'll know more at that time. Next fall is where we stand and how we move forward with that. Um, I did attend a Michigan School Business Officials Conference in Grand Rapids. Um, and they had a rep from, uh, Bluebird and very knowledgeable. And they had a worksheet and if you get the proper amount of grant funds, he listed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In 15-year use of the bus, you will save roughly half a million dollars. That was on his worksheet, um, but that's what he showed as a savings over 15 years of useful life of the school bus with grant funds available to you to purchase that bus.
Perfect answer. Thank you. Questions, comments?
Yeah, don't have questions, but just, um, I wasn't here last time and just wanted to note that I did go back and, uh, watch the last board meeting to watch her presentation and appreciated the additional detail this time about the timeline and just what's, what's to come. That helped me. My questions were around that. Um, but just appreciate all of the work and time and effort that was put into the process. The, uh, surveying of the community and really understanding what, what the community's desires were and building the plan based on that. So I really see that represented here and just wanted to say thank you all for that.
Any other questions, comments? Yeah, Dave. Oh. David, Susan, then Brad. How's that? That's who I saw first.
Okay, sure. So, um, just one, uh, quick, uh, question and then, um, a few comments. Um, so, and we discussed this a little bit, um, before, but I just wanted to kind of, um, get it, get it out there and also clarify for anybody who might've been reading along in the packet and having the same question that I, I did. But, um, 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 looking at the idea of getting STEAM labs into every single school, um, we have a line item for every school except for Liberty School in the packet. But when we were talking, we talked that there, there might also be the potential for there being some space opened up through some of those mechanical upgrades that, that there could be some potential for, um, for some STEAM space to be opened up, uh, here as well. So I just wondered if you can talk.
No, I, yeah, and that's something I forgot to add to this piece after we had our conversation. We do as, if it's a transportation location was to move, we do have a space that's an HVAC space that was, was our old wood shop back in the day when we were here, that we could look at how we would redesign that and use that space that was there for the building here as well. So yeah, I apologize for that, but there is some funds in the, and, and allot it to Liberty for those things as well.
Yeah, and that would be, um, obviously great for, for every, every grade and every school to, to get, uh, uh, the STEAM lab space. So, um, yeah, just to move on then to my comments. Um, thank you obviously for all the, the hard work that went into putting this, um, proposal together. Um, I was especially interested because it's kind of, um, meshes with my professional experience in looking at the polling that was done, um, of the community to see how, um, you know, how this would be received. And I was, um, impressed looking over the technical details. It's, um, what a good job, um, Epic of Maria did in, um, capturing accurately the demographics of, um, the, the voters in the community. And I was also, um, happy to see that, um, you know, you guys were looking at trying to, to, to be cautious in, um, in, in the threshold that you wanted to, to, to get, not, not just to get it to 50% of, of voters because we're looking at a, a margin of error, but to, to get to more like 60 or 65% of voters. So that, that seemed like a good approach and a, uh, approach that I like to see because obviously, um, we want to, to get something passed. It needs to be something that the voters will accept. Otherwise it's not going to, to do any good. And, um, you know, just my kind of process in looking at this, the, the things that I was looking for were, you know, are we looking at a millage, are we looking at a proposal that, that's meets the needs of students and the district as a whole? And clearly it looks like this does, especially with, you know, a big focus on necessary facilities upgrades and on educational upgrades. Especially, you know, coming out of, out of, um, the pandemic, out of, um, the, the losses that kids have had with respect to education. That's, um, something that we need to kind of boost. So that's, um, something that's, that's wonderful to see. And then secondly, is it a, and equally importantly, is it a responsible use of our, our taxpayer dollars and, and finances? And, um, you know, given that this is going to be a reduction in the overall mileage that we're looking at, that seems like it is too. So I'm happy with what's, with what we're looking at. Thank you.
I have a lot, so, um, I'll try to, I don't know, uh, maybe pause. Um, so I am super excited about, um, the electric buses and the solar panels. Um, I believe, like, um, Rex Clary said, um, that we're getting two or three. Um, and I know we had a conversation about that funding. Um, and so I'm, I'm super excited about, um, about that. Um, I hope that, um, we, the 20-plus other buses that we're planning to get that aren't electric, um, that we'll be able to, to, um, yeah, do more electric than, um, uh, the other ones. Um, I think that's a really good investment in our community's, um, health and also, um, our world and lowering greenhouse gases. And so I think, um, that's something hopefully, um, with, with the, um, that that's been looked at across, um, all of the facilities, um, thinking about that. Um, you know, uh, what things that we can, can do with, um, with lowering the emissions. Um, so that's really a statement. Um, I know some districts are doing exciting things with, um, with, with their, um, funding. And, um, I know one district in Michigan like completely did electric and that, but that was super exciting. Of course it was, you know, like very financially supported, but, um, I, I thought that was, um, a good model for, for us to, you know, eventually move to. Um, let's see, the middle school, um, it says that there is allotment for, for bathrooms. Um, so the bathrooms and sinks and everything in the middle school is having been a, a parent coming in for the first time, um, in the middle school and, uh, using facilities when, when I visit, um, it's awful and disgusting. And, um, so whenever we talk about that allotment for bathrooms, is it not just the locker rooms? Is it all of the middle school?
It's all the middle school and we will have, we were going to change that word, obviously. We talked to Ron about that just before the meeting. So it will be, you know, I, I'm with you because I know it's a 50-year-old building. So, uh, no, the concept of the, that spaces are in there are, is, are set to be renovated and looking a little different.
Okay, cool. Um, and so, um, thank you. I know that was some questions that I got from, uh, parents and a couple of children. So, um, that's good. Um, so I guess another question, sticking with the middle school. Um, I know, um, I had asked this question about, it's kind of a combination. Um, about the middle school, um, out from that with the senior center, um, the CTE programs with the cosmetology. Um, super excited, excited about, um, both of those, um, items. And, um, so I, I know in earlier plans that, that were shared, I guess from, from my constituents, um, one of, one of the items on the middle school's, um, senior center CTE, it said special education. And, um, I'm wondering, um, why that would have come off. Um, I, yeah, I don't know. So, and, and this ties into Liberty School as well, which is not receiving a lot of funding and houses our community, community, uh, programs, including Pooh Corner. Um, and then additionally, so the community has access to Liberty. Um, and there is the Alt High School, um, Liberty Club, um, so special education programs, early childhood special education, um, and also a community daycare. Um, I know that that's, but you know, as, as we talk, I'm, I'm going a couple of places, sorry. Um, so I, I'm just, I know, you know, early, there's especially early childhood education. Um, there's a real, um, need and actually funding, uh, was this past week with Gretchen Whitmer, um, who is, you know, has, um, allotted a lot of funds for, um, daycares, um, and early childhood programs because it's a growing need. Um, with people moving into, you know, we're building and constructing around here. And I think a lot of young families may be hopefully moving in and that may be their first introduction to, um, our facilities, right? Um, with programs coming in, I'm excited that we have, we're expanding the Great Start Readiness Program. Um, but that pushes, that crams the space here, um, with, with our other programs. And so, um, I, I just, were there conversations with special education programs? Um, were there any sort of? Were there any sort of thoughts about the space? And, yeah.
Yeah, I think that there was a proof of concept that was developed that showed that potentially the senior center would move to here to Liberty and that we'd move parts of our special ed programs up to the Liberty where they were at over the course of our testing it and talking about it. Didn't work for Mrs. Garcia, and then the special ed staff felt they had a good space here. We didn't think the cost of bringing the senior center down and revamping the whole area that we have down here made sense as well, where we were thinking about where we could add the concept of the cosmetology program and then adding a steam center built onto that same big space that we have down there. So I think that got washed earlier in the whole process, but it looks like Rex has something. We're good.
So early on the concept, we did have a concept for our master planning pieces. The piece across from Weber-Blies was going to be an early childhood center. We were developing that center. We were developing that prototype?
Yeah, proof of concept.
Proof of concept, along with the fieldhouse concept, along with other things that we were looking at. We visited Novi Early Childhood Center, where they house the community ed, and this is their first point of reference to into the district. Excellent facility, great facility. We just, we made decisions and we moved, worked through it, but Liberty would be a perfect concept for that if we moved to the early childhood center to Liberty and expanded that in this general area. But what would that look like? What would the domino effect for that be of moving special ed and that kind of stuff? So it just didn't work at the time. If that makes sense. But yes, we did have several conversations about it, and it's proof of concept on drawing.
And I did talk to Molly Garcia, our director of special education. She is going to, I think she's going to reach out to you as well because I know that you have concerns with some of the spacing and some of the shared spacing. And she wants to-
And prioritizing of-
Prioritizing. And she wants to talk with you about that, get more information about that, so.
Yeah.
And we did do, I know a number of renovations in this building, including those spaces in the 2015 bond. I wasn't part of the renovation piece, but-
Brought the alternative high school up to district standards. That was superintendent Grayden's goal, was to bring the alternative high school up to the same standards that the high school had. The Liberty Administration Hub, attracting top-tier talent was one of the board's models, I think, at that time. Was trying to get to make it more professional in that administration hub, so. And then the ECS, and then of course, the ECSE program.
Yeah, I know that a playground was made more accessible, which was really exciting. But there's still accessibility issues, which is one another thing with the sports complex and everything. Making sure that all of our schools are accessible to getting there safely for all of our students. But also our students with, you know, wheelchairs. And I know we talked about that briefly, even in this space, it's, there's an accessibility issue. And with the playground that was created as well, you know, that's also a shared space with, you know, multiple programs. Additionally, this might be a separate conversation, but Liberty Schools, if I'm not mistaken, you can get through all, through all of the doors throughout, that it's for fire code reasons, right? It's opened up, but given that community members are here while our students are in session, like school is in session, I have great concerns about security. And I think it's a really big issue that needs to be addressed. Election Day, I get anxious as I'll get out because our buildings are open to the public and to my knowledge are not secure, you know, so that's a whole other thing, but-
I can also look into that with Mrs. Melcher.
So I'm sorry, just to clarify, the question is about the improvements for Liberty, the Liberty Building is part of this bond? Okay.
Yeah, and security is one of our top things that, while we've done, but then, and are continuing to do. So what's your question about?
I just didn't understand what the question to David was.
There are security issues in this building.
Just as a point of clarification with the Liberty Security, when the building opened, we did design those two passage doorways where we secured those. And as you alluded to, the fire marshal asked us not to do that. And so in response to that, we then shut the front door. The front door had operated as an open building, so this was the only building in the district that the public could walk into freely without being buzzed in. And the other six buildings in the district, you had to be buzzed into it. Now this building operates like every other school building. So as far as the access, once you're inside the building, it's just like the other six school buildings. So now anybody that comes in during school hours has to buzz in at the front door, just like they do at Harvest or Pleasant Ridge or Woodland Meadows. But once you're inside, just like the other buildings, you do have access to the building. So during the school day, the only other door that people can get access in is down by ECSE or Pooh Corner, and that's got a facial recognition system. So that too is locked during the school day. So we've changed that in result or as a response to that fire code issue.
So when people come into the space, so anybody really, and the public could come in, right? And not be a volunteer or anything like that, right? So there's two security point, you know, there's. So basically, somebody could come in, be rung in, and that's great. But there's still going to be access to our students and-
It's the same as the other six school buildings.
Is it volunteers or somebody coming to pay something for community ed?
We verify their need to be in the building. So if somebody says, "I'm here to pay community ed," they get buzzed in, they sign in in the office, they go to community. And if they're coming in to play pickleball, they sign in, they go down to pickleball. So we verify what their need to be in the building is, just like we do in the other buildings, and then we send them to those specific locations. Like I said, we did make that change because of the fire marshal's situation, so.
Yeah, but it goes back to the spacing and there being a need and not pushing these programs and special population students in small spaces and not adequate security, in my opinion.
Okay. And as far as the elections come, I will double check with Mrs. Melcher. I know she has plans in place for when we do have a large population of people coming in.
Can I clarify, is the issue that it doesn't have the same security as the other buildings? Or this one needs different security? Because what Assistant Superintendent Ellis is pointing out is, you know, for example, if you were to get buzzed into Heritage, then a parent, volunteer, whoever it is that gets access to the building is able to walk throughout the pods, just like this building. The difference is, is we used to have the front door open in this building with the idea that people could not get to the other areas. But now that the, you know, a fire has come in and said, "Hey, you can't do that." Now we've secured the front entrance, in addition, brought on additional staff to help manage the door. So we feel that the security is the same in this building as it is for the others.
So I think the, there's several differences. But you don't walk directly into the office here, for one. For two, our volunteers, our parent volunteers, go through the Raptor system. Does everybody that comes through those doors get the background check, even if they're just stopping by community ed or going to play in the gym? Or, you know, that would be, I assume, a huge difference.
Well, I do think we could look at having, I mean, I hear what yours is asking right now. And sitting down with, I think, myself, Carol Melcher, and we really, Mr. Ellis, and talking about what we need to do maybe here, Mr. Clary, to upgrade. But there are finances in this bond to help make it more secure. And if this is something, there is something out there that they might know or someone else might know, we might be a good way to start, so. And just to hit your complex area, we are looking at inclusive. That whole design process will embed all of us, making sure it's a safe place for any student that would be coming this way. And inclusive, we even talked about, from one of my conversations with one of the board members, is including an inclusive field for students as well. So I think that's something that's important to have as part of this complex as well.
Great. So with the steam space, which I'm excited about, and clearly families and the community is, and I think it's great that we are, you know, a district that is spending money on that and hopefully prioritizing. Are furnish, like the furnishings and supplies and everything included into that space?
Yeah, that's all part of it. That's, yeah, part of all of it. And again, part of the design team, and then obviously, they have people that represent like what we want in those spaces as well.
Great. And then, let me see.
And right now, I'm just going to ask Carter.
Put on a list what you need. And then, so with, you know, I want to, I know we have different groups and everything that you all have spent time with. And so I don't know if in that group, any of the board advisory committees were included, specifically our DEI Advisory Committee, who would probably be able to speak to the accessibility pieces and making sure that, for example, the facilities are, there's some gender-neutral facilities, those kind of things. And also with our wellness committee and strategic planning and our vision and goals around that as well.
Well, that, I can't speak to all the people that were in what groups they represented, except that is something we could definitely be part of when we design spaces and doing some of the other pieces that we are looking at doing, moving down the road as well. So that's a good point to remember.
Thank you.
All right, $180 million, so I take it pretty darn seriously. Do you want to say something?
So I was going to say, on the security piece, security is something we take very seriously. And we meet with the Pittsfield Police, Saline Police, Fire Department every four to six weeks. And, you know, Jay and I did a lot of work for that grant, but it was Kurt's leadership that kept getting us together to make sure that we were applying for those type of things. Leading the way is the moving forward in security because we talk about it every month. It's very important in that team and just very important to us. So we do meet monthly to talk through it and we address concerns. And these doors, you know, Liberty is a concern, we talk about it, so it's very important.
Thank you. I see Carol hiding back there too, and I know how important security and Alice training and everything is in this building and your involvement. So thank you.
I'm glad we, thank you. All right, so as I was saying, you know, I take $180 million bond scope incredibly seriously, especially this group has entrusted me as treasurer here and all that. So first of all, I want to thank you for the time we spent together, right? The questions got answered about specific costs, usages, versatility, you know, the survey. I thought the information about cold vote versus informed vote was interesting. And, you know, and I thought it was really interesting, 89% of our electorate voted votes. So that's great. So that's important to the success of our bond. And I guess my comments on this are as follows. So when I think about this bond scope, I think about two things. I think about, I think about my children and students, and then I think about how does this, you know, how is this attractive to our community? And so, you know, when I think about my Graham, he's math, science, CAD programs, project lead the ways. But my Bryce is more of like a drawing and architecture and engineering, that kind of thing. So I think about I have versatile kids, and I'm sure a lot of families have versatile kids. And yet my kids are also playing sports and doing all that kind of thing. So I see a lot of pieces to this bond that make us a both and district. And I really like that piece. I like that it's a versatile bond. And so I want to specifically state how much I appreciate the feedback we've gotten from our steam parents. You know, you spent a lot of time with us in the last couple of years, visiting us, robotics, Girls Who Code. I'm sure I'm going to leave out a whole, you know, Science Olympiad and what have you. And these groups are high-performing and high-achieving groups that I will tell you, I'm just super excited. I'm a science teacher too, so full disclosure. But I'm super excited because I think that helps us to, I think about jobs. And I think about creating the next generation of scientists, engineers, medical professionals. And so I think about our community and the payoff to the talent pool that we will produce as part of these programs and supporting these programs. And so I think about that. I think about the volunteers and teachers and students who are doing these things, and they're doing it at a really high level. So I will tell you, if I think about, you know, I love athletic programs, but I also think that these steam programs are incredibly deserving of our support, financially and structurally. So like, I'm all on board with that. I love the additions to the elementaries. I like that this addresses some crowd overcrowding issues that we have. So we can then look at class sizes and how do we manage those things. I think about COVID, and I think about like what we had to do with cafeterias and all of that. I hope we never go back to that, but at the same time, I like the versatility of that space. You know, I think about consortium, I think about a lot of things. So long story short, like I guess I wanted to say that I am appreciative of the work that is here. And I'm appreciative that there were things about this proposal that were well thought out. For example, like I would have preferred on the transportation center, I heard tonight, that that would have used our own land. But then you think about, right, last time you brought to us, that might not be a great use long-term for that financial resource. Well, I want us to make those kinds of decisions in this proposal, right? And so like I could tell you, as treasurer, I like that. I appreciate the long-term thought that went into that. So anyway, you know, I took a walk the other day and I went up to the, I walked the middle school track. And I will tell you, it's about 10 minutes from my house. And it is, you know, like I said in the last meeting, it's breaking down. And so I think prioritizing that facility, and I love the idea of revenue generation, utilizing some of those kinds of things and partnering with our community ed. So I applaud that. I applaud the cosmetology program, that the cheerleaders will have their own space. Like I think about technology and how that requires like regular refurbishment, right? It's just, I feel like that's just the price of business in the 21st century in classrooms. So anyway, so I think of this proposal as just being incredibly versatile and having a lot of things that support all the things that, because I know a lot of our families have students and have kids who are just like mine, where they like this and they like that. And so anyway, so when I think about my home, I think about, I want us to be cutting edge. I want us to be leaders. I want us to be able to be a place where it's a destination, right? We chose to come here. So I think that this bond proposal continues to make us a destination place. And so for that reason, it has my total and full support as presented.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I have to burst a little of Brad's bubble. I did get feedback from cheer that that space won't work. We can talk about this offline, just in case the coach and any other of the cheer team are watching. It has to be a specific size mat, which is the size that's in the wrestling room. We can talk about this, but I appreciate you thinking of them. My only remaining question is not what will you prioritize, because I understand that there's a lot more work and a long journey to go down. And I love the idea of these design input committees. I love that. But what's the structure? How do you begin the work of prioritization if this passes?
Great question. There are three series. I'm going to let the president hear, but there are things that we'll put as priorities, but based on certain things. Like for the transportation might have to leave sooner than later to get the middle school stuff going as well, but I'll let-
So there's a lot of things we look at. First, we have to look at how the series, the bond series unfold. So, you know, we own, the first series gets sold, you get X number of dollars, part of that 180 million, and we have to have a scope to match that. So that's the first thing we look at. And then the second thing is, what are some critical things that have to be done first in order to allow other improvements to happen? So that is kind of inherently part of the prioritization process. The other thing is, we do look at initially, what are some projects that we can easily deliver quickly? Because, you know, we often get asked- know, we often get asked the day after the vote, you know, when, when is that field going to be done? When is that, you know, renovation going to be completed? Now, certain things take a lot longer time to design and build. But there are some things in the bond that we can execute early. So we do identify that and then see if it makes sense. And we will do that. I, I really can't put into context the amount of work that we're gonna have to do after tonight's decision in order to get the application done. Because we have to make all the scope, everything balanced to the penny on every series. And we have to lay it out and make sure those critical things are done first. So it's a very involved process and we weigh a lot of things, but that, you know, that's a real general description of what we go through.
That's perfect. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yeah, Susan and Jenny?
Oh, I just, I want to be clear about, I think this is great. This, this bond proposal. We're gonna vote here soon. But I did, I did want to point out things that maybe, I want to make sure that we don't leave groups behind. And so if anything does open up, you know, as far as maneuvering, anything, please keep that at the top of your mind. So yeah, I think this is a very exciting bond proposal. I really do. And think our community will be behind it. So thanks.
So my family has lived in the community about 20 years now, I think, maybe a little more. And I think right around 20 years. But one thing that has always impressed me is the partnership between the schools and the community. And I think that the responsiveness that the committee who has been doing this work to get this proposal in front of us has really continued to embrace that idea that we are a community and the community and schools have the partnership. So I appreciate the work that has been done to, to think about the needs of the senior center and to think about the, the community walking paths and how the facilities can be accessed on, during times that are not school hours. So thinking about the positioning of the spaces in the building so that our, our clubs can, can have access to those, those buildings and, and spaces on the weekends is, is just another, another way of connecting our community and our schools instead of having the two separate things. I think the reduction in the millage also speaks to the physical responsibility and how other things in the community are going to have an impact on, on wallets. I also just wanted to note how beautiful the progression of, of STEAM has been in, in our community that has gotten us to this point. And I think it's a really exciting day. I think about my, my career here and how, you know, things started small with, and, and we've heard from lots of people about the grassroots clubs, Destination Imagination and, and the STEAM clubs, robotics clubs, Girls That Who Code, Who Came Tonight. I think about how the schools really embraced PLTW, even in our kindergartens and young fives classrooms, all the way through high school. The move to the innovation labs and even the partnerships with our media specialist and how that just has opened up opportunities for our kids and how they have now started to seek out even more of those opportunities in and outside of school. We, we almost every board meeting have a club. I'm, I'm looking around and I see lots of faces who have been here to present to us many, multiple times sometimes, right? So, and also thinking about just the opportunities that, that this lends for us to be leaders, which we've, we've been leaders, you know, throughout, throughout the 20 years that we've been here. Celine has been an, an anchor in the state for leadership. And so this is an opportunity for us to embrace something that is going to have lifelong impact on many of our kids. So I appreciate and applaud the work that the committee has done. And, and I, I think it is an inclusive plan. I, I think that there is some room for, for continued consideration. And that's why we'll continue to have groups who have input. But I, I just want to say that you have my support and that I just really appreciate the work that's been done so far. So thank you.
Thanks, Jill.
Julian, do you want to say anything? No? He's like, you guys said it all. He's like, you guys talked enough.
I've known him a long time. It's the first time he said he didn't have anything to say.
I love seeing senioritis live and in front of him.
It's just Mr.
And we're gonna leave on a high note. Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you very much, everybody.
I have a point of order. Are we gonna move forward?
I was going to.
So I'm wondering if under action items, I don't know if this is, you could, do you want to open it? If we could move E and just do it now? We just had the discussion. I feel like it just makes sense to roll into that to me. But I don't want to step on your toes here.
So Brad wants to move item E up to item A.
I'll second that. Okay.
Support E step.
So motion was made, Gerby, second, Jenny, to move, right.
And Susan's support.
And Susan's, Susan's the third. So Brad, the, the motion will read recommended motion to move item E in the agenda under action item eight to item A. Okay. And I don't think we need any discussion unless I'm wrong. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Okay. So we would like to entertain a motion, please, to approve the millage renewal scope. And, I can't read my own writing, and a point five, 0.5 mil reduction that will generate 180, 180 million to be used on future bond projects as submitted by David Raft, Principal of Operations.
So moved, McVeigh.
Support.
Move, McVeigh. Susan, support. I'm gonna assume no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. This is when you can say yay if you like that. Especially our presenters that just had to answer a lot of questions and do a lot of work for us last, last week. So thank you very much. Okay. Now I'm going to flip back to the second action item. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the purchase of two 2023 Ford Transit 10, 10 passenger vans for first alternative high school program and also SWWC for the combined total amount not to exceed $105,820 from Feldman Ford Detroit, Michigan.
I'll make that motion.
Jenny, thank you.
Second, Jones.
Candace, thank you. Any discussion or conversation on this one? He's ready.
I have one quick item.
Yeah, go ahead.
So in our board packet, it says that one of the buses is covered by a donation. The other one funds come from?
The six or seven school in the consortium.
The six other districts will share in that cost and the upkeep and maintenance of that vehicle.
Six to one.
Correct. Correct. And I just like.
Plus the gift.
Who pays for the other one?
Yeah.
So the safest way to and from school, with or without seat belts, is a school bus. We firmly believe that moving students on a school bus is the most safest way to get people to and from school and, and events. But in today's world of shortage of bus drivers, these vans are crucial to, the one van that we bought in 2017 is used four out of the five days of the week. And there's multiple requests for the tennis, for golf, for the consortium, for alternative high school. They are a luxury to have and they're a luxury to use to get students to and from service learning events, competitions. You know, during the winter, I put my foot down, we, we moved people with bus. Especially if we have with weather. But the vans are, with the shortage of drivers, they still do, we just still do a background check on their driver's license. I run those numbers. I approve them as drivers or not approve them as drivers. And then it's up, and then we move them forward from there. So they still are driver license checked before they drive to there.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Like to please entertain a motion and move to approve the purchase of inclusive playground equipment at Pleasant Ridge for $119,875 from Pensura as submitted by David Raft, Principal of Operations.
So moved.
Jenny, thank you.
Support. Susan.
Susan, thank you. Any discussion?
Yes. Being our bond person and talking about our inclusive playgrounds that are in the future, will this be something that is incorporated into that concept? Just to make sure it's, we're not approving it tonight. And then, you know, series two, we're getting rid of it.
No, great question. We did talk about that as a committee of crew. This is done with, it's a two-year-old initiative coming from Nicole Phelps and Special Department there. The Foundation Award at 25,000, the PTA Award at 20. And with Mr. Clary's leadership in this piece, designing the facility to, we know that if, when we bring in the new potential playground, that this space will be staying there. And it will also be a nice piece to showcase people when we talk about the bond and what other places could also have as well. So there'll be three inclusive units that will be there with soft, almost like padding kind of material around the playground and stuff. And so, and two swing, new swings that'll be also part of that. And it kind of flows in that path. I think Pleasant Ridge has done a really nice job over the years of trying to build that playground as well. So this would be a good concept to look at as well. That won't be a, won't be a, it's, it won't be the, it won't be fake. It'll actually be what it looks like. So we'll be able to see that soon, this summer, actually.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
David, I just want to say thank you. I was at High Point School last week at the community event and got a chance to see their version of an inclusive playground. And it was fantastic. And I think ours is gonna be right along the same line. Absolutely necessary for our special needs students and medically fragile and so forth. So great. Well done.
Thanks.
I just want to note one thing, that this is a combination effort, too, with like the Pleasant Ridge PTA and it looks like the foundation for Celine area schools. And so like I want to make sure we note those programs that are assisting with this purchase as well.
And a lot of leadership from Nicole.
I was gonna say, and special accolades to Nicole Phelps.
Nicole has been driving this. And obviously COVID slowed some of this process down. But it's been on Mr. Clary's list for quite some time to get this done. So.
All right, let's go. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to the next item, I'd like, like to entertain a motion, please, and move to approve the purchase submitted by Rex Clary, Director of Operations, to furnish the HVAC building management system for the Celine High School in the amount of $947,128 through a purchasing cooperative awarded to Train U.S. Incorporated.
So moved, Jones. Candace, thank you. Support, Miller.
Jenny, thank you. Any discussion?
Any questions? So this is just a move forward to replace the Windows XP unit at the high school that will be unsupported after January 1st. These controls have been pieced together since we updated Harvest Schools. We brought those controls over to keep the high school going. It's, it's, it's a big budget, but we're buying the controls that are in five other buildings. So the district will be the same controls throughout. So consistency will be very important for visibility for my HVAC staff to keep a positive learning environment going. We'll come to one, we'll have one more bid for labor to actually install this and the cabling. And then we'll hopefully get it installed before that January 1st deadline.
So funding for this coming from?
This was scheduled phase three of the bond. It was phase three of the bond.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Our last, thank you. Important things not to forget about that, right? Our last action item, I'd like to please move to approve policy 2340 field and other district-sponsored field trips as, as recommended by the Board Policy Committee.
Motion, Gerby.
Brad, thank you.
Support. E step.
Susan, thank you. Michael, you want to take the discussion?
I do. First of all, we looked at this last, two weeks ago, policy 2340 field and other district-sponsored field trips. And here are the four points. We've generally tightened the language in the policy. Number two, the Board of Education will no longer approve overnight or out of district trips. Number three, this is a clarifying point, in-state and district-sponsored trips will be approved by the principal slash the administrator of the school or the program requesting it. And finally, the superintendent will provide regular updates to the Board of Education informing us of all overnight out-of-state trips. We're still working on the details, but probably will be on the weekly, weekly message to the board. Plus, all those trips will be logged on a spreadsheet of some sort.
Great. Thank you.
Perfect. And I love that this moved forward. The spirit of this is that I believe I can speak for the board, when we do not want to hold any student back from attending extracurricular activities. Field trips are incredibly important to clubs, sports, classes and, and experiences overall and, and in support of our Celine area schools' compass. And sometimes things come up at the last minute. So we don't want to have to say no. So thank you very much. All right. Any other comments, questions on this one? I think just to note that we had two or was it two special meetings?
We had two.
Because of, because of last minute approval.
One was because of Julian.
Yes. And so I was going to say that one of them, a team was actually waiting in a parking lot for us to approve the field trip. And so when Jennifer's talking about, you know, we don't want to hold, hold our students back from these opportunities, had we not been able to get a quorum that night, that, that would have held them back from competing in their, in their competition. So this is a good move and it also is really an operations situation. So it's falling to the people that really have the most intimate knowledge of what needs to happen. So.
I think I said this at the last meeting, because we, we discussed this previously, but the legality piece, I'm so thankful that they came back and said that it isn't a requirement for the board to approve. So I think that's a huge relief for when we talk about not wanting to hold students back just because of, you know, yeah, something with, with, thank you, oversight. So I'm glad that that's no longer on us and that, you know, we'll continuously get the updates and everything. It is kind of exciting to see all of the, the places that, what sports teams are going and what, you know, what, what people are doing out of state and field trips and all of, all of that good stuff. So.
Okay. Moving to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Discussion items, Vice President McVeigh.
The Policy Committee met this afternoon down the hall in room 33. And here are the five points. I just want to make sure you all know. We decided to pass along a policy regarding dress and grooming to the DEI committee for their input. We think it's time for their insights. We heard from our law firm of Collins and Blaha and discussed recommended language we received from them regarding compliance officers. And we hope to get the changes to a set of 13 or so policies into a future consent agenda item. Next, we began a review of policy 0167.3, public participation at board meetings. Just to ensure that it's clear, there's a long road ahead. We have a lot of tweaking to do. And as, as trustee Eset pointed out, we've been tweaking and modifying this ever since her first day, which is great, which is fine. We want to make sure everybody's heard properly. Number four, we unraveled a mystery about the use of forms for early graduation. And the board should, the rest of the board should now note that we, that we noticed, eagle eyes over here, noticed that board approval is not required for early graduation. So your packets are going to be considerably lighter going forward. And finally, now, of course, you can always challenge that, but that's what this is for. We are, finally, we're going to pass along to the DEI for input. We are, uh, finally, we're going to pass along to the DEI for input regarding a set of policies regarding, related to, uh, anti-harassment, the policies that are out there now. So, there's a little work to be done there and, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, getting their input. And that's it. And we adjourned at six oh-six. Uh, yeah. Nothing to vote on.
Perfect. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All right. Thank you very much. Moving forward, Administration Updates, Doctor Lott.
Okay, I, along with, um, Assistant Superintendent Ellis, have some comments tonight. Mine are fairly lengthy, so we'll start with that. And then, um, Assistant Superintendent Ellis is gonna take the floor and introduce our next official high school principal. Anyway, I will start with a diversity, equity, and inclusion update. And, uh, recently, we sent, we sent a short survey to the community and held five focus groups related to racism, discrimination, and microaggressions in the school district and a community. The five focus groups conducted by myself and Shannon Washington, who's our culturally responsive, responsive consultant, included parents and guardians who have, students who identify as black, students who identify as Asian, students who identify as Hispanic, Latinx, and Native American, students who have religious views, and students who have a disability or identify as LGBTQ. Those were the groups that we met with. We plan to share all of these findings in greater detail at the July twelfth Board of Education meeting. We've also contacted the City of Celine and Mayor Marl's office. And their DAI Committee is going to do a joint presentation with us on this evening in conjunction with the, um, Celine Area Schools, uh, DEIAC. We need to be working together, school district and city of Celine, to continue to address inclusion. One thing that's very clear to me is that all our students need to feel part of the school district. We cannot have students looking over their shoulders to be on guard when someone is going to make a racial slur. And we can't have our students searching far and wide for a gender-neutral bathroom. And we also can't have students who have conservative or religious values feel like they cannot express their views for fear of retribution. We need to work on finding common ground to support all our students. This is why I'm announcing that effective immediately, we are strengthening our commitment to the Celine Bridge to Civility and making a big push to get the nine norms within the Bridge to Civility practiced with our student, staff, and community. As many of you recall, the Celine Bridge to Civility was developed a few years back based on a model from Ellington, Can- Ellington, Connecticut Public Schools by a small group of diverse-thinking community members in this community, including law enforcement officials. And the goal is to address issues with civility within the community. However, we've only rolled this out so far to a small group of adults. The Celine Bridge to Civility will be part of our rollout and orientation plan at the beginning of next school year with our student, staff, and community members. We have a tremendous community, one that I'm very, very proud to be a part of. Yet with a stronger unification effort, I am very confident that we can make all our students feel included, feel more included. And I'm gonna add one more comment and then, um, turn it over to Ms. Ellis. So I want to address the end of the school year District Quality Survey. So on Mon- this past Monday, May twenty-third, Celine Area Schools invited people to participate in the final survey of the academic year. The survey is our annual end-of-the-year School District Quality Survey. We want to hear your thoughts on critical school issues, including academic support, student support, family involvement, school and district leadership, including my own, safety and behavior. And we recognize that it can seem like there are a lot of surveys. We realize that. With that said, we're working together to create a systemic approach on how we collect feedback from stakeholders. And we're creating targeted surveys, revising the line of questioning, and being intentional about the timing of surveys. So thank you for that. And now I want to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Ellis.
Thank you, Superintendent Lott. Uh, it's my pleasure to come before the board here tonight to, uh, announce to you what is not a secret any longer. And that is the fact that Teresa Stager has emerged as the top candidate to become the high school principal, uh, of Celine High School. Uh, for those of you that don't know Teresa's background, she's been with the district for about six years. She was hired as a, an assistant principal. And I'll never forget, the day she interviewed, we had one of the worst summer thunderstorms ever. Uh, she was sitting over in the office and, and had to stay for an hour or so after that because the rain was just coming down sideways. And we thought the building was gonna go away. But, um, Teresa really did distinguish herself. She's done a great job as an assistant principal. And then this year, uh, when Mr. Raff transitioned over to the Principal of Operations, uh, Mrs. Stager took over as the interim principal, uh, and, and then also lost another assistant principal to another, um, change of assignment. And has done a, a really, really nice job garnering the support of her faculty and staff as well as her coworkers. And so we're really excited about Teresa stepping into this new role. Um, in conjunction with that, Teresa has also spoken with us about some of the needs at the high school after being there for six years. Uh, and so in addition to the announcement that Teresa will be the, uh, principal, we are also going to further clarify Musetta Dineen's role as an assistant principal. She'll be essentially the principal of ninth grade. Uh, we know that that's an important transition for students as they come into the high school. And we want to make sure that we are laser-focused on their needs as we, uh, as we transition them into the high school. So we're excited. Uh, Teresa will then lead the process to backfill some assistant super, assistant principals and, uh, deans of students. But, uh, we're really excited to have Teresa on our team and want to congratulate her.
Teresa, come on up here. You're not getting off the hook.
Teresa, have you accepted the offer?
I, I have accepted the offer. And yes, I know what I'm in for.
Would you like to say anything, Principal Stager?
Um, I, just thank you for the opportunity to continue leading this amazing school and this amazing community. And, um, it, it warms my heart and I'm so thrilled to just be able to jump in and, and move forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Teresa. All right, um, you're all set? Julian?
Uh, well, mine, my, uh, board update's a bit short. To start off prom, for everybody wondering, uh, a lot of parents and teachers and everybody always is curious on how that went. It was inside the high school, absolutely beautiful venue, uh. Miss Stager, you can laugh. I'm serious. It, the, it was, it was Emerald City themed. I walk in, there are green flyers everywhere. It was the outside they spray painted, you know, the yellow brick road. It was awesome. I got, I got to party inside the cafeteria. I got to dance with all my friends. It was awesome. So prom, prom was, prom was unbelievable. So thank you to everybody who set that up and, um, made the quick change from outside to inside. I can't imagine that was too easy. So, uh, I, I don't, I don't know a single person that didn't have a blast there. So we, thank you very much. Um, and then lastly, as a student representative, on behalf of the class of twenty-twenty-two, uh, we'd like to thank the Celine community and the board. Um, and I'm just gonna use this as a platform real quick. So thank you to the parents who supported us, chaperoned field trips, uh, and participated in the classroom. Uh, thank you to the administration, staff, maintenance crew, janitorial staff, bus drivers, cafeteria staff for keeping, uh, our schools beautiful, clean, and safe. Um, and then thank you to all the coaches and volunteers that led us through all the extracurriculars that we are very lucky to have the opportunity to participate in. And then thank you to the teachers who supported us throughout our phenomenal educational journey here in Celine. So we're thankful to have such a strong and consistent support system here in Celine. And the entire class of twenty-twenty-two appreciates your support. So thank you guys very much. And that concludes my final board update.
Well done. Oh my God, I'm, we're all gonna cry when you graduate. It's gonna be like Compass Night, Jenny, when Cam was up there talking. It's gonna be bad. Um, any trustee comments tonight? Yeah, go ahead.
I just had a couple of things I wanted to mention, um, just to build on what, um, Julian just said. Thank you to, uh, Lori Dawson and the junior class for, um, the quick, quick move when, when weather wasn't going to support the outside venue, um, moving that indoors. Um, I had, uh, the chance to kind of see it before students arrived and it, it looked beautiful. So I'm sure that they enjoyed that. And, um, it sounds like everyone had a wonderful time. Um, I also wanted to just, um, say, and I've shared this with, um, with Superintendent Lott, um, but I wanted to share that, um, this past weekend, um, Officer Lamar, who is our Student Resource Officer at the high school, and we've heard, um, we've heard throughout his tenure, um, that he's, the time that he has been here, that he's made an incredible impact on, um, students in their, um, in their daily lives at the high school. And I got to see that firsthand on Friday night. My children participate in, um, dance. My, uh, twins, Drew and Laney, are dancers at Dance Alliance. And their, uh, company held, uh, their recitals on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And a number of the dancers, um, invited Officer Lamar because they hang out with him at lunch and they talk with him in the hallways. And, and he came. And he stayed for the entire three hours, um, and posed for pictures afterwards and connected with families and shook hands and introduced himself. And I can't tell you, um, what an impact that made on, on my own children. But also, um, just to feel supported by, by someone at the school. I mean, they've had, they have had teachers come before, which is always appreciated and definitely not necessary. So if you're listening to this, don't think that you have to attend everything. I know we're all busy. But just to take that time on his time off to come and to support the kids meant the world and just continues to build that relationship between, um, between police and, and our kids. And, um, creates a safe, uh, opportunity for them to have someone, um, as an outlet. So thank you to Officer Lamar. Um, I wanted to say congratulations to Teresa and to Musetta also for that, for, uh, for their new, um, roles at the high school. I'm very impressed so far and, um, can, can't wait to continue to see, um, what's next. Um, and then I just wanted to say on, on today, how thankful I am to the community. Um, for the last campaign that was safe, warm, and dry. And on a day like today, knowing that our kids are safe in the buildings and that we repositioned entrances and we repositioned, um, the office at Pleasant Ridge so that there was an extra measure of safety. And that is a direct result of the community, um, passing the last bond. So on a day like today, we're reminded of how important those things are. So thank you for that. And thank you, um, that we can send our kids to school tomorrow with that added measure of safety. So thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. Well said. Any other trustee comments? Yep?
I just wanted to note that, uh, Monday morning, bright and early, Superintendent Lott, Jennifer Stevan, and myself attended a legislative coffee hosted by the Wasna Association of School Boards. Many superintendents and board reps from across Wasna were in attendance. Legislators included Jeff Irwin, Felicia Brabeck, Donald Lozinski, Debbie Dingell, and Haley from Debbie Dingell's office. We had actually a wonderful discussion about mental health, mental health workers, and the state of public education across the county, the state, and the nation. And I'm looking forward to the next one in six months. And we also recognized trustee Gerbi and Board President Stevan on their accomplishments through MASP. And thank you. I hope you get your hardware soon. Oh, oh, awesome. Will Superintendent Lott pin you?
Thank you. Thank you for that call out. And congratulations, Brad. Well done. Yeah, Candace.
Yeah. And Jenny, you got me all teary-eyed now. So I'm like, and mine was kind of a teary thing too. But, um, I wanted to give a shout out to our, all of the staff that support our affinity groups. Um, this week, my, darn it. I was trying, I was like, nah, cause I was already teary. I'm not gonna look at you. But this week, uh, my son, who's at the middle school, uh, participated in the Black Student Union. And it was his first time attending. And he just came home just raving about the support, having a safe space just to be able to fully be himself, to share things that he's experienced in the school and, you know, just all of that. So I, I really, really appreciate that. And in light of, um, Superintendent Lott and all the work you've been doing to understand what's happening in the community and what, uh, variety of groups have been experiencing, um, just knowing that we have these safe spaces for multiple groups of students where they can really show up and, and be themselves and feel like they have community. And he's like, I'm definitely going to the next meeting. So that was just so encouraging. So thank you. Shout out to Andrea Collins, who, um, runs that. Just wanted to share that.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody else? Nope. Susan?
Um, so I think last time I mentioned that, um, I was a chaperone on the Chicago field trip, um, sixth grade. And, um, that was amazing. Um, I had a, um, group of very energetic, um, children. Um, and, uh, so I was really on, on my toes the whole time. Um, but, you know, um, there, the organization of the trip was awesome. Um, Lori Dawson, um, of course, was, um, part of that. So I want to give a shout out to her. Um, also the admin and teachers and all of the volunteers on the trip. Um, you know, you, you, they, they were really, um, really great. Um, and then also, um, a parent nurse, there were parent nurses volunteering. Um, one who, um, helped me with my boo-boo. Um, I was so excited about the zoo, I guess, that, um, I fa- like, fell down on the concrete. And, um, so, uh, she was amazing. Um, and we had, uh, I volunteered for the Woodland Meadows, uh, Field Day, um, last week. Um, and it was great because it was scheduled on a day that it was pouring down, gonna pour down rain. And Ms. Chekowitz, um, emailed and was like, pretty much, I, I heard, we are not going to miss Field Day and moving it inside. So, um, rescheduled it for the next day. Um, and it was an absolutely beautiful day. Um, you know, it, the Field Day hasn't been held in a while. So, um, super excited that, um, that kicked off. And, um, you know, it, it was great for the end of the year. Um, and yeah, I'm excited about, um, all of the, I can't believe it's like almost the end of the, the school year. And, um, looking forward to, uh, attending, um, being part of graduation and, um, enjoying seeing those pictures of prom. Um, and so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm having a lot of, um, positive energy things, um, you know, going on in the districts and, um, in, sorry, in the district and, um, hope that we have a great kickoff, um, in the fall as well.
All right. Um, I just want to keep this about the students because this is the last board meeting that we will be in session during the school year. So I wanted to say goodbye to all of them, um, including our, our very own Julian. But I am so incredibly impressed whenever I'm in the buildings. I, I got to finish up JA. I got to go to, um, the Connecting Club with, with Michael and, and Steve. Um, and see those students get to participate in Compass Night and hand out medals and, and watch Jenny and Michael give certificates to the students and hear their stories about not only what they've been accomplishing. Oh yeah, and Teresa, you should have seen the smile on Teresa's face the entire night. She loves these kids. Um, but to see their parents and guardians and to see their staff members sitting next to them that they came, that they honored. Um, and not only did they talk about their accomplishments, which were fantastic, and where, where they, um, intended to go after school or what they intended to do. But they, um, they talked about who they are as people as they leave Celine High School. And I couldn't be more proud. Um, so goodbye to the class of twenty-twenty-two and we will see you on June third. Um, I'll see you twice, um, as we say goodbye to our track friends in the morning and say goodbye to everybody else at six PM on Friday night. Um, so thank you very much. Good job. Hard year. Good job. Um, moving on to our consent agenda, the following are offered as part of the consent agenda. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. These items will not be read aloud, but will continue to be listed out individually in the minutes for this meeting. I'd like to please entertain a motion and move to authorize, uh, the following listed items as part of the consent agenda.
Motion, Gerbi.
Brad, thank you.
Support, Jones.
Candace, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Items on our next agenda, Steve.
Okay, so in June, we have one meeting. Therefore, we have a series of, um, updates that will occur kind of to close out the year. And that would include. will occur, kind of to close out the year, and that would include Sex Education Advisory Board Update, Wellness Committee Update, Foundation for Celine Area Schools Update, and a District Parent Council Update.
All right, is Truth and Taxation? Next, or is that, budget hearing, budget hearing? 6:00 PM budget hearing, and I think everybody has that early, early one on their calendars. Okay, perfect. Now is our second opportunity for public comments, same rule, same rules will apply, and Secretary Jones has, has the cards. We'd like to welcome community member Chiang Ming Fan. Whenever you're ready. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Try to make it, can you hear?
Yeah, you're great.
Ms. President, Mr. McWay, Dr. Large, board, and friends, my name is Chiang Ming Fan, local resident, local entrepreneur, president of Tiny Light World Inc. I rise first, thank you so much for your great leadership, and congratulations for all of your success. And also, today is a big day. This board of the bond, today's decision, you just modified the code, it is very important to move forward. For this proposal, I fully support this proposal, and hopefully in November, you will, just like me, both years. It is very, very important for our students, local residents, young and old, and local entrepreneur. If anything I can do to work with you, let me know. And I also want to echo Brad talked about this, it is so important, think technically, STEAN, technology is so important. We need money, but also we need a vision. So, that's important to understand. We need two things, what I want to add, material and land. All of these need money. So, detail I will talk later. I hope that I can have opportunity to present our technology. And Mr. McWay is supportive for the idea of SALT, which is Celine Area Light Tower. Let me just say one thing is that Celine School Area have the good vision and a good campus, which is creativity, collaboration, communication, and critical thinking. All of this, we need move forward from 2015, safe, warm, dry. Now, we need higher level. Let's work together, make this thing work. I will see you November, and hope that we can contribute it technically. Let me know if I can be used at your disposal to support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback. Our next meeting, the next regular Board of Education meeting, will be held on June 14th, 2022, at 6:30 PM. I'd like to please entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting of May 24th, 2022, at 9:01 PM.
Support Miller.
Thank you, Jenny.
I guess motion Miller.
Motion Miller, second.
Support Jones.
Okay, Candace, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?